They will notify you when you have one minute left and 30 seconds left. We have here Dee Davis and Dorothy Ronaldo, Women Voters. We thank them very much. Obviously, the moderator will be in charge of proceedings and his decisions are final, along with Special Counsel Mike Zarin sitting with him. Those who speak out of turn or in any way disrupt the hearing may be asked to leave the proceedings by the moderator. Anyone who fails to comply will be escorted from the room. Okay, if they have any further due, I'd like to introduce Miguel Hernandez. The purpose of introducing our moderator for the evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's now time for the Board of Trustees to hear from those of you who have questions, comments, or concerns for or against the proposed development project. Toward that end, the Board has reached out for the services of a neutral, independent moderator to manage the public hearing portion of this evening's DEIS meeting. These public hearings are the responsibility of the Board of Trustees and not of any other party. However, the Board is of the opinion that a moderator with no vested interest in the outcome of the proposed Harbor Square concept will best serve the community in this instance and to assure that everyone who wishes to speak has a chance to do so and to be heard without interruption. A professional court stenographer will take down and transcribe every comment made tonight as well as those written remarks which people will submit will be transcribed and inserted into the official record. Additionally, the public has until the close of business on March 20th, 2001, to submit written statements. An official written response to all verbal and written remarks will be issued by the Village of Osning in the near future. The use of an outside moderator enables the Board to concentrate on listening to the viewpoints of all speakers and affirms its commitment to a fair and open review process. We ask that you treat all speakers as you would like to be treated. The Osning Briar Cliff Croton League of Women Voters will assist the moderator by signaling speakers as to their time constraints and also assure impartial treatment of all speakers. Tonight's moderator is Mr. Timothy Johnson of the U.S. Department of Justice Community Relations Service. Mr. Johnson is out of their national office in Washington, D.C. He has over 20 years of experience in moderating community meetings around the nation. We are very fortunate to have him here tonight. Mr. Johnson is not being paid a fee or otherwise being compensated for his services by the Village of Osning. Without further comments, I would now ask Mr. Johnson to begin moderating the public comment portion of tonight's DEIS forum. And, as you know, those of you who wish to speak filled out a three-by-five indexed speaker presentation card. I would now ask that those cards be brought forward. There they are? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jim Johnson. I work for the United States Department of Justice Community Relations Service. My job is going to be to call out names. When I call out your name, what I would like for you to do is to come up here to this microphone and make your comments to your board. Each of you will have five minutes. If you don't want to take the five minutes, you don't have to. However, if you'll watch these ladies right in the front row, they're going to hold up signs for you. If you're going too close to your five minutes, they're going to hold up a sign and say you only got one minute left, 30 seconds left, and like that. My job will be to take this little gabble and go like that and say your time is up. Thank you very much. If you've not finished your point, don't worry. You can write it out. You have until the 20th of the month to put it to the Board in writing. Let us begin. Ms. Cheryl Goyette.
Yes.
Is Cheryl here?
Yes.
Ms. Ayee Friend. There you go.
I'm concerned about the parking issue. The first speaker is always the most... Okay. The current plan seems to have approached the initial concern of some people in the community that there was only... Okay. I love being first. Sort of. How's this? Are we okay now? The current plan seems to have addressed the initial concerns of some people in the community that there was only going to be one parking space per unit, primarily by creating permit parking for overnight use for 70 of the residents along Westerly Road. It also makes a lot of assumptions while that the parking needs patterns of the residents, of retail customers, of the restaurant patrons, of people who use Engels Park, guests of residents of the community are all going to dovetail very neatly into the commuter pattern. It'll be the reverse of the commuter pattern, and I think that's a very, very big assumption. I don't think the developers have addressed really the needs of these other kinds of users adequately. Just a very small example, there are four guest spots on grounds at Harbor Park for 225 families. I mean, when was the last time on a Sunday 225 people only had four guests coming? I mean, it seems a little bit light in that regard, but that's a small issue. When the 70 residents have their permit parking overnight from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., what happens if they go on vacation and have to leave the second car? Where do they go? If they take a day off from work? If they're not fitting into the pattern very neatly? If they don't have exactly the work hours that you expect? In one of the parts discussing the restaurant, while there would be 109 Village provided spots, which of course is additional length being granted to the project, there may not be enough space at lunchtime for the restaurant, okay? And then may be a need for valet parking. Where are the valets supposed to be parking these cars? I mean, I don't think that that was adequately addressed. The parking study also indicated that commuters wouldn't mind walking from the proposed Area C to the station, which is somewhat longer than the walk that they have necked right now. Has anyone surveyed commuters to find out that they agree with, oh, well, this wouldn't make much of a difference to me? I doubt that they get that result, but that's my personal expectation. Also, patrons that use Engels Park and the Boat Club now use a lot of the Waverly Road area for parking. If during the day that's two-hour parking, I mean, if you take your boat out, you're not going to come back in two hours. In addition, some of the assumptions on page 87 about peak usage for the park and the promenade don't make an awful lot of sense. They give Saturday usage from 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon as the peak period. Is one-hour peak usage on Saturday, you know, kind of reasonable? I question that piece. The fact that the impact of the development on parking problems in the rate in downtown Main Street area, I think it's one thing to say on the positive side you're going to have more customers for your stores, but I think there's also going to be an awful lot of traffic. One minute. So in summary, the proposed scheme really pushes the envelope with the utilization of available public park and using it two, maybe three times, not using it once. And I think it's a little Pollyanna to expect everything to dovetail this neatly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jackie Weir.
Unfortunately, the second one, of all the kings, has been worked out. I want to thank everyone that has come here this evening. I'm an owner of a business downtown, have lived in this community for the last 12 years, and have seen many changes. I also understand the passion that many people feel about this community. I work closely with the downtown businesses. I know lots of the landlords. I am affiliated with the Alliance for Downtown Osning, and I have my own business. So I've got a little bit of everything involved in the development and also the preservation of the character of the downtown area, and this especially includes the waterfront. Our water and riverfront is our biggest asset. When I came here, it was one of definitely the appealing things that I brought my children to see. The park is utilized on a regular basis. It is, especially Engel Park, is something that is a great asset. What I'd love to see is that the mayor and the trustees, please keep in mind as you look at the proposals here and the comments of the people that are here, that we need to make sure that we fulfill the needs for the open space. Development is great, and that's where we need to be developing towards in terms of better use and quality of that open space. One of the great assets we have is the fact that we can encourage people from outside the area to walk into our riverfront and park area. At the moment, it's very inviting to residents. We know it's there. We go down there, we visit it day and night and enjoy the concerts. Unfortunately, I try to encourage people from outside the area, and they don't always feel the same welcome. It's not as kept up as it could be kept up, and just like the waterfront in New York City, it might need some renovation. This proposal this evening allows for a lot of open space. I wish that people would take a look at it, see how the open space and particularly the restaurant that would be down there would facilitate people to go down there and check out the waterfront. I welcome everyone's comments. Please keep an open mind in terms of how this is going to affect the village and trustees. I want to thank you again for having an open meeting so that everyone can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been asked to ask each speaker to state your name and your address so the stenographer can get that. Our next speaker is Ms. Gloria Tannenbaum. Any organizational affiliation might also be helpful.
I'm Gloria Tannenbaum, 24, Chadrav, Osning. One of my concerns and a major concern is about the rezoning. In order to do this proposal, the rezoning would have to be such that the project would also rezone the entire waterfront up to Crowbucky Beach. That means that the Red Bank, Nowry Side, the Westerly Marina, the Shadowman Club, the Brandon Hill Factory, all this could be developed at 60 units in acre and up to six stories high. Do we really want this along Osning's... we want to permit this along Osning's shoreline? That's my major concern. Thank you.
Mr. Tom Langston.
I have prepared two analyses of Tom Langston, 33 Terrace Avenue, Osning. I have prepared two analyses. The first analysis is the amount of revenue to be generated for the owner of the waterfront project, Capelli Enterprises. The analysis indicates that the estimated annual net income from the after property taxes of the... or the owner of the proposed waterfront project would be approximately $3,563,000 per year. If the project costs approximately $35 million, the projected return, i.e. the net income divided by the total cost, would be more than 10%. I have two questions. The first is, how does this return compare to other industrial development bond projects in Westchester over the last 10 years? Secondly, how does this return compare to other real estate projects in Westchester and, if available, in Osning over the last five years? The second analysis that I did is concerning the amount that the taxes would be reduced if this project goes through as it's currently configured. The analysis indicates that if only one additional employee were required for the village, would have required by the Village of Osning, and only 12 additional children would reside at the proposed waterfront project, the taxes for a property owner in the Village of Osning currently paying $5,000 per year would be reduced by only $10.33 per year. This is approximately 0.2%. Since one of the principal reasons for initiating this project was to reduce the taxes for the village and town residents, how does this compare to the amount in the original proposals received for this project? The payment in lieu of taxes will be $547,500 or $2,055 per apartment. How does this compare to the amount of property taxes that are currently being paid by the owners of apartment complexes in Osning and also other condominium complexes such as Eagle The attached analysis indicates there would be no tax relief if 34 or more school-aged children resided in the 225 apartments, including 79 two-bedroom apartments, proposed for the waterfront project. This is 0.15 children per apartment. How many school-aged children per condominium live in the Eagle Bay complex? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I remind all the speakers, would you please state your name and your address so the stenographer can get that down? Our next speaker, Mr. James Anderson.
James Anderson, 114 Inching Post Lane, Yorktown, New York. I happen to be a union iron worker, and I've always lived in Westchester. From '91 through '97, I lived in Osning, Eagle Bay to be precise. The waterfront in question has deteriorated immensely over the years. By building Harbor Square, people will once again want to shop, visit, and dine in Osning. This will be a major boost for the economy of Osning. Hundreds of union jobs, hundreds of union jobs for members of Westchester building trades will be created. Not only will the amount of work be beneficial to the local union workforce, but these men and women will be spending part of their paychecks within the confines of the town of Osning, thus funneling money back into Osning. This is a chance for Osning to recapture its well-deserved reputation as a prestigious waterfront community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Suzanne Gallagher.
Hi, Suzanne Gallagher, 40, Somersdale Road. First off, in Section 5 of DEIS, adverse impacts that cannot be avoided, it is stated, "All significant adverse impacts resulting from the proposed Harbor Square development will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable." Provide a precise definition of the term "practicable" in the above context. Provide fully detailed examples of how, in one instance, a hypothetically realized negative impact on the finances of the school district, village, and town finances... Sorry. Okay. Would be offset... Sorry, I'll start over. Provide fully detailed examples of how, in one instance, a hypothetically realized negative impact on the finances of the school district, village, and town finances would be offset by specific benefits of the project, both in isolation of other cost factors and also within the context of the sale of the premises at the proposed price, including the loss of anticipated appreciation in the value of the premises to the village. Provide similarly detailed examples of offsetting benefits for every item listed in the DEIS that either was determined based upon applicant's data not to require mitigation and/or every item that would require mitigation but will not receive it, whether determined to be not practicable or otherwise. Further demonstrate in detail how such negative impacts, not mitigated, would affect the taxes of the average residential taxpayers, town, village where located in a village, and school tax bills for each of the proposed 10 years of the proposed pilot agreement in each of the following communities: Village of Osning, Town of Osning, which is a town outside, Village of Briar Cliff Manor, Town of Newcastle, and Town of Yorktown. Also, fully detail the loss of each of the particular uses or things in connection with the following: Loss to the community, loss to adjoining property owners, loss of dedicated parklands, loss of municipal assets and/or the value thereof, whether partial or total, with estimates in US dollars of the value of such loss; intangibles such as average lost commutation time per commuter, loss of options for the potential development of the entire riverfront from Sing Sing to Crowbucky. Another statement from the adverse impact section, "The proposed development will have certain long-term and short-term adverse impacts as would any development on the site." Please specify in detail the adverse impacts that each of the following development models of the site would impose. Passive parkland, which is light landscaping, cleanup of the site, benches and small-scale playground equipment, also include a complete analysis of grant funding available for remediation, development, recovery of acquisition costs and maintenance. No-build scenario also include projections of appreciation in land value to offsite expenses, project developed in compliance with currently effective zoning and LWRP, mixed-use project developed as parkland with accessory light commercial development of existing Maui and Hitchcock buildings, again, including a complete analysis of grant funding available for remediation, development, recovery of acquisition costs and maintenance. Consider and discuss cost escalator language in the pilot agreement that would increase the pilot payments by the average cost per pupil of the Osning Union Preschool District on a per-pupil basis in the event that the school-aged children population projections of 13 students in the project are excluded. This cost of same to the school district using estimate of 0.339 pupils per unit as adopted in the Landin FEIS expressed in terms of total number of students, 13 times average cost per student for the 2000-2001 school year as budgeted, and then expressed on a per-year basis for each of the 10 years of the proposed pilot agreement using the growth in the cost per student for the period from '71-92 to '60-01. Some other statements, "The village board has stated at various points that they wanted the public to be involved in this process. If this were true, there would have been a referendum before any decisions were made." The village board has also stated that they wanted this process to be transparent. If this is true, they should demand that the developer provide a fully accurate scale model of the project, giving the public a clear idea of view blockage, the height of the buildings, and the general magnitude of the project.
The lady must hear. Thank you. Mr. Peter Krieger.
My name is Peter Krieger. I'm a business agent for Ironworkers Local 580 and I'm a resident of Mayapack, New York. I'd like to first commend the mayor, the trustees, excuse me, Capelli Enterprises and all the associates, for I think developing a plan that uses a lot of common sense and considers all the concerns of all the residents of Osning. I'd like to say that a lot of my members living Osning, women and men, and many other women and men of other different unions, live in the town and village of Osning. As was said previously before, it is nice to work in your own hometown, and I don't think there's many of us here tonight that can honestly say that. I think the majority of us transport down to Manhattan or wherever places further south. So it's a great pleasure to have some of our members, to have the opportunity to actually take part and history-making. We have an opportunity to better a place than it was there when we leave. And I think that's all our intent, the mayors, the councilmen, Capelli associates, the citizens that sit here tonight. I think our first concern is to try to leave a place better than it was before. And I honestly can say, I could drive around in this area, which I'm a representative of, and I have my daughter and my wife in the car, and my daughter say, "Hey Dad, didn't you work on that job?" I said, "Yeah." And I put a smile on my face. Even look at the building that you're sitting in tonight. How about the people that had the foresight of developing this plan for an auditorium that we're using tonight to voice our concerns? Great stuff, right? I think, I think that what's done here tonight is, the concern is for the open space. And I think with a lot of the meetings that I've been to, most developers want to utilize every inch of space that they can. And I think you should commend your mayor and your council people here tonight to really kind of put their foot down to that and making sure that there was some open space for all people to appreciate, for your children, your grandchildren, and many generations to come. So I leave here tonight with one thought. If you have an opportunity to leave a place better than you have it, and you don't do that, I think you'll be remiss on that. So I commend the mayor again, and then councilmen, and Capelli Enterprises. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Gersh... You're up and outside, lights up? Please, restate.
My name is Jerry Gersh, Mayor. I live at 42 St. Gate Road in Osning. Many letters have been written and speeches will be made tonight and tomorrow decribing the proposed residential and commercial revitalization of the Osning waterfront. Some have referred to it as the Capelli Plan and others as the Osning Plan. In my opinion, whatever you call it, it's just fine as long as you recognize that it's a big plus for Osning. Those opposing the development have unfairly castigated Capelli Enterprises and have sought to make them the target of their misguided opposition. Let's examine the history of the waterfront in recent years in order that we can see where the credit is due. In 1991, the Maui family, who used to operate an oil business, donated much of the land that the apartment houses would sit on to the Village of Osning. Other properties were required for purchase, and all this took place in public with many articles in the press. articles in the press reporting the facts. The Village of Osning then sought to rezone the area on both sides of the railroad tracks from industrial uses to a new waterfront development zone that would allow types of buildings proposed by both Mr. Capelli, who was the winning designated, and Mrs. Ginsberg and Collins, who were the other bidders. There was tremendous public input into the rezoning process that started in the mid-'90s. In addition to the village planning board, there was also a citizens advisory committee that aided in the rezoning process. While all this was going on, I do not recall hearing or seeing any of today's naysayers in that process. Upon the completion of the rezoning, the village sought proposals from qualified bidders, and I recall being at the public meeting where Capelli, Ginsberg, and Collins all made their presentation. Once again, all of this took place in the light of day or evening, and the public was a participant and witness to the process. Mr. Capelli's original proposal was much larger than it is now, but an uncontrollable flaw revealed that part of the land, which we call parcel C, might be unsuitable for construction. Similarly, attempts to reach an accommodation with Metro North regarding the parking garage didn't work out. Was this a change in the proposed plan? You bet it was. However, as anyone who has ever been involved in development of this scope can attest, an initial plan is but a work in progress. Good faith proposals are made, and as further studies are made along the way, necessary changes must be made, literally up to and including the final site plan approval granted by the planning board. If today's opponents were asleep at the switch, naive, or didn't pay attention to this process for the past few years, then shame on them. Now they've woken up and opposed the most significant development in Osning in many years. And what do they propose? More parkland. Sounds great to me, but let's look beyond the rhetoric at the feasibility. The village has already spent $1,350,000 to acquire the land, with the Flavour Site's parcel still being litigated. To turn it to another park means they will never do reimburse for that money, add in the cost of the environmental remediation, approximately three-quarters of a million dollars, and construction of the park itself, another $2 million, not to mention the constant maintenance and security and your one heck of an expensive piece of park. Now let's look at the benefits of the development. In addition to the reimbursement to Osning for the money already outlaid and borrowed, there are jobs to be created in both the construction and operation of the development, sales to be made in local stores and restaurants for the new occupants, significant building permit fees, and approximately half a million dollars a year in real estate taxes. There's an old adage in real estate that time kills deals. The longer it takes to complete a transaction, greater is the chance that it will not happen. Imagine if this process had been completed before Floyd decided to visit Osning in the fall of 1999. Similarly, I feel strongly that the demise of the movie theater on Main Street was a result of the actions of certain individuals who had made a full-time career out of suing the village. Had that project not been delayed by the interminable objections of the anti-everything crowd, the property would have been sold and the lease with the cinema operator might have been signed. While I'm not seeking to defend Mr. Capelli himself, I do commend his vision and willingness to invest in Osning. He's spent over a million dollars of his own money on this project, and the final sum will be well into the millions. Thank you.
It is not Old Main Street as it is on one of your maps. Big mistake. The future residents, would they be made aware that on weekdays, 179 trains travel by where they would be living? On the weekend, 115 on Saturday and 117 on the Sunday? The diesel trains are used a lot when there's problems with the electric trains, and they are very, very smelly. I don't know if you've ever smelled them. And a lot of fumes come from the engines, which creates a lot of pollution. The area of the Van Dyson property, when the buses were parked there in the winter, they'd leave the motors running overnight. So that ground surely is very polluted. It is not an area for a presidential. It should be a park, and a park can be had with grants. I don't know why they keep denying this. The Meredith Hitchcock Building could be used as a museum, and it's not meant, it's not meant for rich people to come and take away our waterfront. They can be swimming there. There's a natural code there. And if anyone takes a look at the photos up on the table, they can see what can be had there. And we do have a park there.
John Hook, 16 Eric Boy Road, Osning. WTA, she said it wrong. It's common. Anyway, oh, 16 Eric Boy Road, Osning. All right? Basically, when I saw the proposal, I've been following it in newspapers and in village board meetings. I'm in favor of the proposal, however with some slight changes and some additions, of course. In order to answer some of the questions the citizens had about parking, housing density, and the views of the river for a six-story building, I propose making it a five-story building. In order to make this economically appealing to Capelli, you can extend the length of the pilot agreement, or you can cut off some of the price of the land. What I'd also like to see the village officials do, get together the town officials, and maybe get a wish list together with direct department, since you're going to have all this construction stuff going on down there, maybe you can enhance Engle Park and be done with the whole project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Coca, 123 Spring Street in Osning. I don't know why you're frowning, Tom, because I just came here to speak the truth. First of all, one of the best, two people, one guy from Mayapack and one guy from Yonkers who doesn't even live here, tell us how much they love this proposal. I have complaints, and I want these complaints answered in detail, since this is what this process is all about. My one complaint is that this development will eliminate any future possible tourism revenue, because as we know, an apartment house versus a park does not create revenue. Will destroy the scenic view we now enjoy of the Palisades. The girl gave me half an hour. Will restrict the free flow of air enjoyed by area residents. Will shadow the greenery now living and thriving in the area. Will pollute the local air quality now enjoyed by residents. Will pollute the Hudson River and further raise cancerous contaminants that start dredging around it. Will destroy our limited park and recreational property that we now enjoy. Will pollute the local air quality with unneeded traffic. Will change present local zoning ordinances for the worst. Will restrict area residents from using the park again because of outsiders and parking from outsiders. Will force area residents now parking in the area unto harm to communities. Will increase sanitation expenses, raising our rents and taxes. Will increase police protection costs, again raising our rents and taxes. Will force our private citizen fire department out of business and into privatitization. Will heavily comply with landlords raising rents, forcing residents out. Will cause little income family taxing harm. Will cause Capelli Enterprises into suing us because of contaminated fill. The fill from the old post office and Spring Street Gas station that was dumped on the site after the soils were tested. Capelli will sue due to the sale of illegally filled Hudson River property that should have been dredged out and wasn't. Capelli will sue to remove recently illegally dumped carcinogens. Capelli suing will raise taxes, causing raising of the rent and causing harm to village residents. Capelli suing will not harm village board, it will harm the people. Village residents will sue village board personally in federal court, returning harm upon them and their personal property. Village proposal is straightforward segregation and considered by many in my community as the newest form of gentrification. This proposal is racism, village board style. The fishing shack in the Hudson's Edge is historically valuable to us. The fishing shack, the fishing shack's location on our Black eyes is Hudson River heritage. It's our Black historical value to the Hudson region and our village, maintained by a Black man of African descent who fair and rainbow Black and White on the art of fishing and ecology, considered by many of us as spiritually significant. The Capelli developments will interfere with Engle Park usage and egress to and from. The Osning Boat and Canoe Club, steel parking from area residents, pollute air, eliminate commuter parking, will without fail take a pedestrian or motor's life because of the extra traffic coming down and off that hill when it snows. The selling of the property for two and a quarter million dollars compared to our cost of $7,207,000 in expenses due to eminent domain and other expenses incurred in state of the property from the owners will raise our taxes. You can smile about that because I know you don't care. And ruin the infrastructure, along with the destruction to our historically significant spiritually fishing shack, location, and heritage is disrespectful.
The gentleman must yield.
Raises a paper. Raises a paper. Raises a paper.
The gentleman must yield. Your fine manager up.
Five minutes left. You might five minutes left.
The gentleman must yield.
Are you up?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And anyway, those pictures in the back, there's not a Black face on them.
Did I pronounce that correctly, sir? Thank you.
Good evening, elected colleagues. My name is John Chivokas. I'm the supervisor of the Town of Osning. My residence is 9 Mulberry Road in Briar Cliff Manor, New York. And as you all know, for some years now, we've been saying Osning loves to read. Never has that been more true than in the last three weeks. Not since Harry Potter hit the scene has Osning been involved with a volume like this. And I must say that I find the volume lacking facts in some areas and flawed facts in others. I'm just going to talk about two. We'll have a lot of people talking about others. One of the lacking facts is something that I asked to be seen in the FEIS, and that is how will the construction of this project, if it ever happens, impact Engle Park, the Osning Boat and Canoe Club, which is very active, as you know, in the summertime, and the Town Boat Launch, which is also very, very active. I ask, where will the site storage be? How will the construction impact our three and a half acres of parkland, Engle Park? And to Mr. Tom's comments, when he was elaborating on the wonders of the park space within the project itself, I remind you all that Engle Park is three and a half acres, which is seven times larger than the half acre of parkland in this project. And if you want to use the figure for the total open space for the project, Engle Park is double the size of the open space in the project. So I ask that. Now for the flaws. I ask, I ask that in the FEIS, the village board with its consultants redo the pilot payment plan. For instance, the pilot payment plan in the DEIS doesn't say, even though it says ten years, doesn't say when payment can begin. Will it begin in year one, two, three, four, or five? When will it commence? At time of transfer to property developer, or will payment coincide with a levy, levy, not levity, but that might be true, of property taxes? Now, this, of course, is a ten-year pilot plan. Consider the fact that it is so long that we will have three presidential elections before it goes on to the tax roll. There is no escalation noted in the pilot. No escalation. So what is done at first will be that way for ten years. I ask that an average 3.5% increase be used throughout the pilot plan. Also, will the apportion share, the apportion share for each taxing district change annually based on tax rates in effect at that time, or will the share remain fixed based on initial IMA? As you know, those change, village, town, county, school, every year, the apportion. I ask that you take a look at that. There are instances where there are errors in the current pilot plan. For instance, you have the school tax and the library on two different lines, although in the school tax line, the library is already included. So I want you to review that and redo that. I also ask, if grant money, specifically the CDBG HUD money, is allocated, which would upset developers' initial investment, will this amount be added to the pilot payments? One further thing, there's an incorrect amount stated under existing tax revenues. Given current tax rates, taxes assessment to Flavour Sciences of Rockwell Bus Company would yield $87,100, not the $48,900. And finally, this one quote, which you've heard me quote before, I just want to repeat that again, Rudolf Bernard Baruch said, "That government is not a substitute for the people, but merely the instrument through which the people act." Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, if you have a blue Buick, license plate Y911WG, you're blocking, and you're asked to go out and move your car. If you've got a blue Buick, go out and move your car. The next issue is that, since we have so many speakers, each speaker only gets one shot. Unless we have two Suzanne Gallaghers, is there another two? Is there another Suzanne Gallagher? Unless we have two Suzanne Gallaghers, is there another two, is there another Suzanne Gallagher?
She has to go to meetings and away from presentations beginning, she's going to come back at the end.
Okay, well, we'll put her over here, how's that? Claire Burke. Lori DePaulo.
Lori DePaulo, 63 Orchard Road in Briar Cliff Manor. Um, I would, my first question is, how will this development meet our stated goals, originally stated goals for developing waterfront? One of the most important goals for this property was to encourage people to use our waterfront and invite visitors and tourists to the area. I can't think of a less welcoming use of this land. The development actually resists public access. Approaching from Seacore Road and in front of the train station, we'll see the tops of the buildings that will block our views of the river. Approaching from the north off Westerly, we'll be faced with a parking garage instead of something open and attractive and inviting. The parking garage on the ground floor. The walk-along Kill Brook promises to be desolate. It's a sidewalk along a driveway the length of two city blocks with a gate at the end. And the other, on the other side, you've got the drop of the kill on one side, and on the other side, you're going to have the car parking garage again, which will be about the height of these basketball nets, the tops of the backboards. The public access from the south will be behind where the restaurant is supposed to go, where we'll most likely have to face the smell and whatever you find in the back of the restaurant, the loading dock and the garbage receptacle. The only real access is through the center, which isn't even visible from the eastern parking lots. Once we get around to the park, we will feel like intruders on private property. I'd also like to point out that a lot of the beautiful views that are illustrated in the DES are from locations that are all on the far side of the building, meaning that Austin residents have to walk around these two huge buildings to get to them. And many of the green spaces that are so pretty on top of the building are the building. They're not green spaces, they're not open public space. And I'd like to know how we will, um, deal, how the developer will deal with the disparity between the need for making this a place that will draw people and what it seems to be, which is very imposing.
Thank you. Sam Storch. Go on, top of your head.
Sim Storch, town of Austin.
Sim.
Storch, S-T-O-R-C-H. Forty-five Solmers Town. Forty-five Solmers Town, the town of Austin. I'd like to pick up on this spiritual piece, that word's been mentioned a few times. I'd like to share with you what that means to me and what it's meant to me in the past, especially when I commuted. Being a member of the Austin Boat Club, I was more than grateful that I could stop and sit on the back porch of that withering building, although it was beautifully maintained by the members, so that it's no longer withering. And recreate myself so that when I came home, I was more human. And I'm sure there are a lot of other people that have similar psychic stories to tell about what the river does for them, if in fact they do. Now, unfortunately, in a way, I think this development has come about because both the town and the village have been very remiss in really showing the public how they could have enhanced both pieces that they are responsible for, Harbor Square and the Engel Park, which of course, at this moment, is practically in ruins, but I understand waiting for some form of rehabilitation. Had a better example been shown, more people would have used it, more people would have had a spiritual connection to what it means to be able to watch the geese move back and forth from the little sandy area in the mornings and across in the evenings to where they hide. You'd see nature. And I'm glad that Supervisor Chivokas illustrated my point in terms of acreage. To have a half acre accessible to us in the midst of somebody else's development is going to be painful for everybody because I don't think the residents are going to be very pleased to see the public passing through their atmosphere and their environment. So I see potential conflict there. And for my personal understanding, I, when you referred to the green space, you mentioned residents and their guests, so is there some portion of that green space that's allotted to the residents and their guests that's disallowed to public? And if that's not the case, well, that makes it sound a little better, but I still don't know where the access points are. Where do we actually come through? Is there a gate like we have now at Harbor Square, which makes that part almost inaccessible except on special occasions? Perhaps you can clarify that for me, and hopefully a few others are confused about what the access is and what the diameter of the access is. Is it a narrow pathway? Is it gated? Will it be locked at certain hours and is always available? And another point, who is going to maintain that? The village? You are. Well, frankly, that sounds positive to me. Thank you.
Ms. Jane Calderon. Did I pronounce that correctly? Please let the lady up.
Okay, it's Jane Calderon. I live at 27 Pine Avenue in Austin. Um, I have a lot of points here, so I'm going to go as quickly as I can. I'm here today to express my vehement opposition to the Capelli Plan as both an Austin... As both an Austin citizen and as a nine-year village-appointed member of the Austin Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Our board was never approached for our opinion or our input on this matter, yet parkland does figure prominently in your plans. Uh, our board was never stated, I mean, excuse me, I'm very nervous. Our board was never asked for programs, although you say you're looking for financial gain. Why couldn't we have a park similar to Peak Skills Riverfront Green? We could have grants. We could have grants to make the park and then many activities and festivals that would be financially advantageous. You also state one and a half acres will be open space. Well, I don't consider a second-story deck and a paved area in front of stores as open space, but you guys seem to. I mean, the tiny park is the size of, you know, somebody's backyard. That's ridiculous, you can't do anything with it at all. As a private citizen, also my objections are aesthetic, which many people have addressed, and also the financial. While communities up and down the Riverfront are acting to preserve open space, here we are giving it away for a song for a bunch of apartment builders. Um, this waterfront is our most valuable property, and I think you're destroying it. I mean, what do you tell people about Austin? The apartments on Long Highland Avenue? No, we talk to them about our riverfront, about our parks, our historical significance, our architecture. Financially, I think the figures are a joke, a half a million, there's no way it's going to cover these costs. For 225 studios, one bedroom plus den, two bedroom plus den, you're saying it's going to be nine to 12 students? I don't think so, I wouldn't be surprised if we had closer to 150. If it does not work out according to these figures, do we have any recourse? Can we recoup our figures, or are the taxpayers going to pay up the rest of it? Let's see here, number 14, oh, $700,000 fund to establish cleanup of any ground contamination. If there's more, since buses used to be parked there, who pays, them or us? Uh, let's see here, parking, oh, there are four spaces in front of the restaurant and retail stores. Store owners are really going to line up to lease there, I'm sure. Uh, the 100 commuter spaces that you said you're building? Well, you don't say until you look at the fine print that those 100 spaces are being taken away from the commuters near the railroad and they're going to have to walk three blocks. I mean, everybody is being ticked off, the commuters, the residents, the boat club people. Who's happy? I don't know. At least you realize one parking space per apartment is ridiculous. You propose 70 permits for Westerly Road. The DES maps show when we, as residents, can park there, and it differs with weekday, weeknight, weekend day, weekend night. It's complicated, it's unworkable. Either the residents can park there, visit the restaurant, visit the stores, I think a restaurant actually would be a nice idea, or we can't get there. It's, it just doesn't make sense. Um, I also don't think that you can look at your reelection as a mandate because the Republican did not debate or state his position on this until the very end, and Don DeBar was kept off the ballot, who incidentally did very well as a writing candidate. I would really like to see a referendum. I would really like to see a referendum. There is a library and school budget vote coming up. I think a referendum should be added to it. I don't think it'll be too difficult because we already have this vote coming up. And you know what? If the majority, thank you, if the majority of Austin residents vote in favor of this project, I'm not going to be happy, but I'm going to shut up because this is a democracy and majority rules. But if the majority of Austin residents say that we don't want it, I think it should be canceled. And I really think that's how they'll vote. But all I ask for you to do is give us our chance to vote for or against it and let it stand on its own there, then it...
Thank you. Mr. Don DeBar.
Thank you, my name is Don DeBar, I live at 87 Ferris Place in Austin. I was going to read, I'm sorry, is my time running with this? Don DeBar, 87 Ferris Place, Austin. I had a prepared statement I was going to read until I got here and saw the way this process was again being manipulated by this corrupt government in Austin. And I'm talking corrupt. Here's the first thing, rather than having a sign-in sheet for this process that could be audited, where people who sign up would be able to speak in the order in which they came, also, that if you got here in time by chance, that meant you got to speak or didn't. There were index cards that were used that were not numbered, and then we were told by the recreation department that they were going to deal from the bottom of the deck after people signed in. Then he dropped, I was here before anyone that spoke this evening, including Capelli's broker over here, who was speaking in favor of the project, and including the two ironworkers from out of town who are looking for work here at the expense of Austin residents who is supposed to be getting jobs out of this. And I'm sure the one from Yorktown, Roland Westall, who's Democratic chairman, can figure that arithmetic out yourself. Just to give the legal folks a little bit of what's going to be coming, I have about 150 pages so far of this stuff, here's an example. Uh, let's see, something that might be here, okay, from item six, growth-inducing impacts. Note that the projected population of the development is between 250... Sorry, overmodulating, okay, 250 and 300 people. I'm pretty upset because this is so rigged and it's so obvious to the people that are here. And with all the bullcrap that you've been spitting out about an open process from the beginning, tonight we were supposed to be able to voice our concerns about this project, who showabuster for an hour by people, again, with the same presentation that's been on television for two years now. The people that are here have to deal with shirts from the developer, and shirts from this group that couldn't get their own people here in numbers anyway, because there aren't that many supporters, so they have to redesign the sheet, it's outrageous! Charlie Cooper made a comment before that might have been lost. In the DEIS, there's illustrations of people at the imagined development there. There's not a black face among the 40 people that are in there, okay? I don't know if that's something that they have to disclose upon them to enable the project, or it was just where the people that are preparing this live in their minds, but it tells you something. Maybe I demand that you reflect those pictures to reflect the actual diversity of this village. A complete definition of the term open space is used in executive summary project OVA and throughout the DEIS should be provided. Include within the same the rights and uses of the same, completely list all restrictions and/or limitations of the same in favor of the developer and/or owners and/or tenants of the property. Also provide certified land title surveys containing raw forces and distances, offsets from the boundary of all proposed and existing improvements, this is before the FEIS adopted. Complete dimensions of all open space. Survey should also show any easements, restrictions, setbacks, and other adverse risks. There's a videotape. The aforementioned survey should also provide complete title and survey data. You guys ate up the evening tonight, I'm going to get what I can to the record, and I'm going to have 150 pages recorded for you. The people in this, in this building have had to sit, a lot of them had to leave already. People at home watching, we need you to come down tomorrow night and witness what these characters were up to, and maybe they'll feel chilled by looking at the people of our village watching. The conveyance itself will allow private development of what is currently a public park. This should be listed as an irreversible negative impact of the adoption of the proposed development. Developer has stated, the project will not be viable unless the density proposed is utilized. That density is prescribed by current zoning. The proposed zoning changes, if adopted, are clearly intended to enable the proposed to be constructed. Assuming that this is in fact the case, the adoption of the proposed amendments would enable a subsequent loss of this public park. This should be listed as an irreversible negative impact of the adoption of the proposed zoning amendments. There's a list of that variety of items here under irreversible and irretrievable commitment of resources. The list should include the land itself, in other words, we're going to lose that, which should include also the possible appreciation of the land that owning it would allow us to recover perhaps our purchase price. Also, the losses to the community and to the village's financial assets should be fully documented. Also, every calculation that was used in the docs, very FEIS with regards to schoolchildren, which was 43 for 125-unit project, which would work out to a million dollars, $1,69,000 or $700,069 a year loss to the school district loan, should be submitted.
The gentleman must be...
And I would like to say it's outrageous.
Two minutes for a tape to be changed, I apologize, this quick, one else will give me a sonographer. Two minutes, Frank.